We'll call this July 19, 2021 meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I extend my allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Starting off, we have review and approval of the minutes from the last meeting of July 6. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion. I'll second it.
Got a motion in a second to approve the minutes from the July 6, 2021 Selectment's meeting. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
We have an intent to cut for Tara Landry on Elm Street. Lot size is 4.2 acres with the acreage to be cut of 2.5 acres to be done by Shane Morton. We have a, this is for the state, it's the health officer nomination form. This goes to the state, as you guys know, Ted Jobe is our health, oh shoot. You know what I forgot?
No.
Department head updates first, I'm sorry. We'll hold off on that. We'll start, Barbara, you want to start with the department head update?
Library summer program's going well. We've got good attendance. And we're finding a lot of new people using the library. I don't know if COVID is doing or what, but a record number of people coming and signing in in different bars before, so that's exciting.
Big break day is this Saturday?
Big break day is this Saturday. I don't know if it's gonna be this rain. It gets exciting.
What's the times for that, Barbara?
I think she had it at 9:00 to 12:00.
And the automation is still going?
Oh, we got it. It's just a bit, but it's, it's working. It's, it's doing different and we're still finding things we need to play around with and fix, but for the most part, it's doing very well.
Eli?
We're in the heart of the summer program. Safe Haven's been pumping. They went up to Santa's two weeks ago. Good time. David Rialto gave them a private showing of the new Space Jam movie, which they enjoyed. We have a new program over at the pool, pool jogging. Hasn't had a big, but still getting the word out. See, people seem interested. Put it on Facebook and everything. But, so that's going on. Just doing little mini camps. Just started a little basketball camp, three-day, four-day camp. Today, and just motoring along. Kids are going to Clark's this Friday. Hopefully, once again, no rain. But yeah, it's, it's pumping over there.
How's community?
It's good. They've been pretty well stocked over there. Almost every weekend has been booked up. So yeah, it's been going well. Yeah, just using it. Trying to, gotta get new signage out there to get some more people to know where it is and to find their way out there. But it's, it's still being used quite frequently.
Chief Sharpe? So the last month or so has been very busy for us. We had the, the 3,200 people at the Rogers campground that was very busy throughout the weekend, in the week. For those of you that don't know, we have a speed sign in place on Portland Street. I think that it's very effective at this point. And we'll be looking to ask the town for some money for a couple of them, at the other entrances of town, because I think they do make a difference. We have one in the academy now, Kyler Kennison. He will be graduating and back on the streets by the end of August. Our, the one we have now doing the field training portion of it, Brandon Moore. He will be hopefully swapping in at least Saturday in August. Fair and for fair. That's all we got.
Well, for us, just business as usual. As far as our warrant articles for air pack cylinders and hose, we're still, we had ordered the cylinders, which due to COVID, they're coming in sporadically. And hose, that's gonna be a little while too, but all that stuff's been, been ordered and hopefully we'll take delivery of that by the end of the year. As far as vehicles, we've got one that's gotta go to the Ford garage for an ambulance. It's misfiring and that's the, the one van that we have the extended warranty on, which is why it's going to the Ford garage. So hopefully that'll be taken care of under warranty. Other than that, it's been very steady. I'll call, I'll say steady. Weekends are picking up a little bit. Staffing-wise, not going too bad. Other than that, business as usual.
Ted, help, Department?
Yeah, we have just two open cases right now. One for bedbugs, one for raw sewage inside our residence. Both are kind of long intensive right now. They should be, they should be being resolved by the owners, their respective places. I've worked on those health regulations that we can pass for the health, but I would like to take an event first and have it for you in your package for like next week, before your next meeting. And on the COVID front, we're still doing COVID vaccinations on a small scale with hospitals. Just do the at-home, take the stuff and go to their house and do vaccination there for that at-risk group. On that, that's all we really got.
Brian?
Yeah, markets are continuing to be going up. Are they a record? No, but it's nice to see you on the upswing. One thing I am, and my next project is I want to continue to start recycling our glass again. Right now, we are just throwing it in the open top, sending it to the landfill. I think we can save a little bit of money. Right now, we have a couple of different options, just kind of deciding which way is the best for us. Our hazardous waste day is in a couple of weeks, August 7, from 11:00 to 3:00. I'll have a report afterwards to show you guys how many units and how many people actually use it, stuff like that. We're not going to advertise in the newspaper this year, just because of the expense, but we're gonna be blasting it on social media, have it on the town website, stuff like that. Sex app? Nothing really. One of the things I kind of want your guys' input on, not tonight or anything like that, is kind of where you see the future of the transfer station going. Me being new, starting my budget process right now. You know, Lancaster does a great job, but there's always room for improvement. So I'd really like your guys' input and anybody, anybody's input, you know? Do you want more education, try and recycle more, stuff like that? That's it.
Thanks, Brian. Any questions, guys?
No, I've been down there picking his brain already. Whenever I go in, I ask questions.
The more questions, the better.
All right, guys, thank you. You don't have to stick around if you don't want to. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, sorry about that. Sorry for the delay to get you guys going. So, health officer for the state, health officer nomination form. This is just to notify the state in New Hampshire that Ted Jobe is our health officer. You've already appointed him back a month or two ago. You just need to sign this at the bottom, to the right of your names that are printed, and we'll send that in.
The, just one thing on the, because our COVID numbers are not actually very good compared to other places in COLOS. Is there any particular reason why you're seeing that, or just?
I'll be honest with you, when it comes to COVID numbers, I have no idea what to believe or not to believe. Anyone who watches the daily state checklist that comes out with where your infections are. W N report's one number, but when we get back through that chain that we get information from, it says that we have one case. So it might say that we have five and we're getting reported that we have one. So there's no understanding of where those numbers are coming from and trying to track it down. We also learned during COVID that those lists and the tourists are still getting updated. So we were finding out about stuff like 10 days into their infection, and that's really obviously not helpful information. We've already been positive for 10-plus days at that point. So to answer your question, I couldn't really give you any information on those.
Okay, I just want to add, do check them every now and then, and just compared to what we was doing previously, we're not looking so good.
Brian, you, we don't even know the Alex, and at the end of that, we have five, say five people in W N R. I think we had one that we got from dispatch.
I've gotten, so, so basically, how, there's been a system in place for, I don't know, since the, the last year, late spring, early summer, where, where the, the local dispatch centers would get a list that they would, they would provide to the, the local emergency management directors of positive COVID cases in their town, so they could, so at least the public safety officials who have to respond to those homes could at least have a heads-up. For well over a month, every report I get from our local dispatch says we have no cases, but yet, like, as to Ted's point, yet the state M U R or even the state D H H S website says we have 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. So that, it's, it's hard to say. There's no indication whether it's a, it's a cluster somewhere. There were some cases back when we were getting, I think, consistent reports that somebody could be living in Northumberland or Groveton, but because their mail, the mail exchanges through Lancaster, so you could live on Lost Nation, have a Lancaster address, or Lancaster Road and have a Lancaster address, but you live in Groveton, but they, they credit us with that individual. So, so even at that, that's not very, very reliable. So it's, yeah, again, there's, there's really no answer and it's, no, I haven't been able to find out any, any way to figure out what, what the issue is.
To your question too, I think the other thing that's interesting is we haven't done a COVID transfer from one hospital to another now in months. Like, I can't tell the last month of an actually positive COVID patient from our respective hospitals and moved into higher level of care. I think during COVID, you'd see that once or twice a week, that, well, maybe once or twice every two weeks we'd be doing that, depending on what was going on. So that's one that we haven't seen since at least we didn't know whether it's come on. So it doesn't necessarily match either where, we had low numbers in the spring, where you could see cases occasionally, and now where the numbers are up, we're not seeing any of those, those sicker population infections coming.
Thank you. All right, moving on. So there's a couple of policies in your package. One is the, the second reading of the 91A copying fee policy. Did take your input and change the paper copies and printed pages to $1. USB drive copies are still 15 and copies to disk are still 12. I think if, if that is all agreeable to you guys, you guys would make a formal vote to, to approve it, and then we would file that away with a copy of the minutes. Does anyone have? Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to accept these policies for copying fees. I'll second it.
Got a motion in a second to accept the copying fees on RSA 91A requests. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The second policy is our purchasing and procurement policy. Again, I think, kind of to follow the, the suit of the copying fee policy, there'll be two readings of it, and I think that's how we'll follow, continually follow with creating and updating these policies, is you get a chance to review it at one meeting, and then the second meeting is where you have your second reading and you approve it and adopt it. I'll give you just some, some highlights of the, the policy. Again, the whole idea is to create a transparent, consistent policy that, that all the department heads can follow. I can follow, the select board can follow. It does allow some, does allow some flexibility for certain circumstances, such as if you're, if you're buying something, a unique piece of equipment, some of our EMS equipment is, is unique and, and you don't wanna, you wanna stay with consistent brands if you're, if you're consistently buying them year after year, so you're not going back and forth like, what is it, the heart monitors or Zolls? So that's one thing. Even, even a fire truck or an ambulance might require a little bit of, not deviation, but flexibility on these policies that gives you guys some, some allowance to, to make kind of single-source agreements on that. How, the, the basic structure of the, of the policy as far as what's required for purchasing things is anything under $1,000, a department head shall approve the purchase, and, and they may or may not seek my advice prior to doing it. And again, before I continue on, all the department heads know, and they're good about it, they are not out to gouge anybody. They, they are looking out for the best interest of the town, Lancaster, and the taxpayers. So they do shop around. They spend an awful lot of time trying to find the best price and the best quality for that price. So, you know, where there's some instances where they can do something on their own, I trust that they will be doing it with, with the best interest of the taxpayer. So purchases between $1,000 and $5,000, the town manager approval is required. A department head shall seek informal pricing options or proposals, and it could just be a matter of, say, an internet search or a phone call to a vendor saying how much is this, how much would this particular item be? And as long as they formally document it, then, and I get a chance to review that, then that's, that, we would go forward with that. Anything between $5,000 and $1,000 and $10,000 of purchase order is required. And again, the, the department head would be responsible to receive three, three price quotes or options from vendors. If for some reason they call a vendor and they, and they don't return their call, or they don't, they don't want to offer up a, a price, then they would document that, say, you know, contacted so-and-so, did not, did not provide a price. So they have to at least try to get three. I'm not gonna have them waste their time trying to calling a dozen vendors just to get three prices. So everything will be documented and transparent. Anything over $10,000 will require a formal written proposal that shall be submitted to a sealed, in a sealed envelope for opening by you guys, the board of selectmen. And so, and then at the, at a publicly noticed meeting, invitations to submit proposals shall be provided to eligible vendors, contractors by direct solicitation, posting on the town's website and/or newspapers or professional journals, at least 14 days prior to opening. And then there, there is an instance where there might not, another option to not require competitive pricing. And some of this stuff I stole from other towns. It looked good. I'll, I'll admit it. I'm not gonna create something that somebody else already has.
Why reinvent the wheel?
So, so there, there is, in, in one of the, the policies I looked at, there was, they had a, an appendix that provided vendors that wouldn't need to go through this competitive, competitive bidding, and it could basically be because we already have a contract with them, such as, you know,
My tax software.
Tax software, stuff like that. Things we already have contracts for. We wouldn't have to go and get other pricing for, because it's already embedded in that contract. But that, there, there's no list now. We haven't created it yet, but that's an option to create that list of, say, preferred vendors that you guys would actually approve. So the department heads would come up with a list and they would explain the justification as to why they're on that list, or why they should be considered for that list, and it's up to you guys to authorize that, their addition to that list. And it's, it's stated that it'll, that list will be updated once a year. So it's not gonna be added on every other month, or something like that. Items purchased under eligible state or federal competitive pricing, that wouldn't necessarily have to go through the competitive bidding. If they are the only known source of that product, obviously, if they're the only known source, how the hell are you gonna get competitive pricing? So it, if it's, if that particular thing is, if we have to purchase a particular thing in order to keep, to abide by a warranty for, for something that we already have, that's another opportunity for it to not to go through competitive bidding. And purchases which can be procured through cooperative intergovernmental purchase agreements with other governmental jurisdictions. If we had a, an agreement with Whitefield to purchase something together as a community, that, that would be, fall under that, that guideline. And again, since this is kind of the first one we've had, I would anticipate some tweaks with this over the course of the, of the next couple of years, as we work through it and say, well, jeez, that doesn't quite fit us. But this at least puts something down on paper that we can start going by. Do you guys have any questions on any of that?
When I look at it, it looks, it's pretty good.
Well, you can thank several other towns for that.
There's nothing wrong with that either.
No, absolutely not. We are working on our personnel policy right now, so hopefully within the next, you know, month anyways, you'll get a draft, updated personnel policy to go through and look into. Again, that's almost 20 years old, so it's due for a revamp.
Not a lot.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. All right, so that would be considered the first reading of that policy. And then the next meeting, the first meeting in August, we'll go through and for the second one and for adoption.
Thank you.
Thank you. Department heads did a good job contributing to that. The next thing, I will let our tax collector discuss. It has to do with the 2021 deeding.
So the deed date's been set for August 12. I sent you each a list of the properties that potentially will be deeded, along with little notes that, you know, whether or not there's already a previous agreement in effect, and if they're paying. There's a lot that should come in at the last minute and pay, which is fine. So you guys can go ahead and review that. Come the first meeting in August, before the deed date, I will bring up, the next meeting, I think it's the second, we'll bring all deed waivers for any unpaid remaining. And at that point, hopefully you will have reviewed and maybe asked me whatever questions you have, and then collectively you'll decide whether or not you're gonna sign a deed waiver, or if the town, if you want me to issue a deed. If I issue a deed, or if you want me to issue a deed, you just won't sign the deed waiver and one will be issued on the deed date. Because I'm only required to not deed if I have a signed waiver. That's how that will work. Now please, stop by, check out the history of what's been happening, if they've had an arrangement or whatever.
Any questions on that? Well, just, other business, under new business would be a recommendation from the Conservation Commission to appoint Kim Vada to the commission, who's interested in coming back on to fill a vacancy through 2023. Troy's got, is the Conservation Commission rep.
Is it a letter of interest or the recommendation from the commission?
The commission voted to recommend her.
We already voted to recommend her. Yeah, I'm just gonna see if I can get her up.
You want me to, I've got it right here, I can read it.
I got her PDF thing here. So, from the conservation, Rachel Stewart, who couldn't be here tonight, she sent me an order later this morning. It's for Kim Vada, and it was unanimous by the board. She's been a resident of Lancaster since 2008 and previously served on a commission and would like to be considered for a term. She's self-employed consultant with a professional background in nonprofit small business. Specific work at LLCs. I don't wanna read her whole thing, because she's making me feel stupid when I read it all. But anyhow, she has a har, a very strong interest in conservation and natural resources and would like to see the town of Lancaster develop a comprehensive, long-term plan and strategy, strategies that will support and protect its waters, wetlands, and open spaces and forest lands to that end. I encourage the LLC to update the town's natural resource inventory. She had encouraged. Propose resulting in the hire of Lee's Lawson. I believe the LLC is an important role guiding the town, and I don't wanna read all this stuff, so collaborate. So the board was unanimous on recommending to come before us tonight to accept her to the board.
Now, she would, her, she would start in September.
Yep.
And it would run, she would fill a vacancy that's, that's due to expire in 2023.
Do I hear a motion? Yeah, I make a motion to, uh, Kim Voda.
Kim Voda, yeah.
Okay, Kim Voda to the Conservation Committee.
I'll second it.
Got a motion in a second to appoint Kim Voda to the Conservation Commission to a term that will expire in 2023. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. All right, thank you. All right, now, information. In, in your packet, there was a letter from Nick Allen. He's from West Burke. He just wrote a letter, I don't know how he picked us, but to encourage the town of Lancaster to move forward with the, with the D1, I'm assuming the D142 power line upgrade. And he references the, the need for more capacity to transmit solar power, because it is the, it's a, and that solar is the most abundant energy source in, in the universe, is how he portrays it. So that was just for your information, not that you have to act on it. Building permits, we have a couple. There's a Jane Low at 19 Weeks Road who is requesting to build an 18-by-26, 18-foot by 26-foot one-car garage on Slab. Meets all setback requirements. No conditions. Josh Paris to construct a three-bedroom ranch home on full foundation on Mary Elizabeth Lane. Again, meeting all setback requirements. No conditions requested. I'm gonna butcher this. Petros?
Hatson Giorgio.
Hatson Giorgio. He's a gentleman that owns Lancaster House of Pizza. He's opening up a new restaurant on, at the Cabot called Mountain Top Restaurant. It's a sign permit. It's a eight, a 16-square-foot sign to be, to be mounted on the building before you walk into the, the restaurant area. Well, basically what has always been the lounge. Yeah. And the last thing is a, is a denial by the zoning board for a special exception for a short-term rental on Mount Prospect Road for John Danos. And that's all I got. Oh, Budget, Budget Committee meeting Wednesday, 5:15.
The, anything else from the board?
Nope, nothing.
Nothing?
I have a question about the, the bed and breakfast denial. Place is still posted as available on the website there. As of a butter, I've received the letters announcing the denial of the permit, but I wonder, how does this work? You said that he can't do it, but he's, they're still advertising it as being available. It's blocked out until the third week in September, but it shows it available after that and describes it as a, you know, bed and breakfast, short-term, self-check-in. In other words, things haven't changed, and so what happens?
Well, I, I plan to be speaking with him this week, tomorrow or the next day.
Would that be the owner?
Yes, the owner.
Okay. I mean, I don't think it was unclear at all that the permit was denied.
I know.
But here we have, you know, my neighbors are calling me up saying, well, it's still listed. Well, so supposing that he continues, and what are the remedies on the part of the town? I know you're gonna speak to it, but about?
Well, he's, he's, he could, he'd be issued a cease and desist order. He could be fined. You could take him, you could, I could issue a land use citation, take him to court. There's many, many levels of, of enforcement to be done. So, the best way is to have a conversation with him and say that this is what you need to do. That way, we don't have to go through the expense of everything else.
Well, I would think that it would make sense to have a letter written pretty soon, since there's no question about, I'm gonna talk to him about it, I mean, if it was the vote and.
Right. I got it.
Right, I understand due process is a good idea, maybe they just forgot to take it down, that's possible.
So, that's why I'm gonna talk to him tomorrow, or the next day.
Thank you, and then we'll hear about that at the next select board meeting then, or?
I can call you myself and tell you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And anything else? Entertain a motion?
Big motion or adjourned? Second.
I got a motion and a second to adjourn, is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, thank you all.